Walk the parking lot here for the last hour. Three million, one hundred twenty-three thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars to repave the parking lot. Looks to me like the front part's already been done. I don't know if that's part of the three million dollars. It also looks like we could seal coat, patch, hot crack that parking lot, probably get another five years out of it. Put the three million dollars to flooding because you know what? We need to cure flooding in this community. That would go a long way for flooding. We could forego the parking lot. Item number C1, charging. Charging, there's no definitive about the new code, can't read about the new code. My opinion on charging, it's a limited option for businesses to decide. Shouldn't be mandated by the government. There is one parking space in this community, in this building right now, and it's occupied by a black Mach-E with a municipal plate on it, and it's parked in front of the charger. So would this building be required to have chargers also? And who would pay for them? And would the public have access? Would they have to pay through the charger? So again, charging should be handled by the charging business community, and it should be not mandated by the government.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snideman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we have a presentation for the Youth Advisory Council. You have a presentation or was it? Okay.
Hello again. I'm Arne Joshi, representing for the Youth Advisory Council. First off, we'd like to say that YAC is wrapping up the 2020 through 2024 program year. Some highlights we've had were Kids Against Hunger. One of our fellow board members, Neha, has attended the M-Parks conference. We've increased participation with the Board of Trustees. We've completed the first needs assessment, and we've started the initiation of a YAC The other copies will be in the back if you want to pick them up. We started our 2024 to 2025 Youth Advisory Council applications. The applications are open on the block's website. They're open to high schoolers who live or attending school in Canton, and the deadline to apply is Friday, September 20th. And lastly, for DEI's for the past couple of months, for May, we've celebrated Cinco de Mayo, and for June, we celebrated Pride Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board before you go sit down?
Sure.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Thank you for the newsletter. I'll take a look at it. Do you, can you tell us where it gets distributed?
The newsletters will be distributed by email. If you subscribe, subscribe to the newsletter.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Congratulations also. You also have these, all these graduates from the YAC program, so congratulations to you and all of the graduates out there. Michael?
I would just say, I appreciate your presentation today. I appreciate the copy of the newsletter. There was a study session on YAC a couple of weeks ago, maybe a couple of months ago, where kind of a request was made about the strategic vision of YAC, of the Youth Advisory Council, and how it could interact with the Board of Trustees. At that time, the Board of Trustees created an ad hoc advisory group or commission. Myself, Treasurer Slavens, and Trustee Borninski, who is not here today, sat on that. We did meet and looked at that, and we have a potential recommendation we're going to make to the, to the board as well. So we look forward to future participation with Youth Advisory Council and expanding that role.
So are you doing the end of the year grants thing anymore? Okay. Thank you.
And then your end of the year banquet is June 24th? And that's at the summit?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a resolution recognizing cadets Ian Fox and Nathan Perrin. Would you like to read the resolution? Or? Okay. What? Well, do we have to read it? Okay, we'll read it, and you can go up there and congratulate them. Whereas the Canton Fire Department recognizes the importance of the cadet program to help assure the availability of competent, well-trained individuals to consider for future fire department vacancies. Whereas Ian Fox and Nathan Perrin became the first cadets for the Canton Fire Department. Whereas they have both shown great commitment to the fire service with their dual enrollment at the Plymouth, Canton Educational Park and School Craft Fire Academy. Whereas they have represented the Canton Fire Department with respect and dignity. Resolve, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton is appreciative of the commitment demonstrated by Ian Fox and Nathan Perrin. Further resolve, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton does hereby recognize Ian Fox and Nathan Perrin for their commendable dedication to the fire service in the Canton Fire Department.
Support.
Motion made by myself and supported by Tanya Ganguly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. So Chief Stockline, would you like to say something?
I do. I wanted to thank you both for being here and being our first cadets. I mean, we've had cadets in the past, but this is a whole new program where it's a dual enrollment, so it's special to us, right? We know that we're grooming the future of the fire service. So welcome aboard, and we hope that you have as much happiness and success here as that I've had over the past 28 years. And we hope that we can get you trained up, and then we can hire you in here. That's our goal. So thank you to the families for supporting them through school and making sure that, it's a tough program, right? And they're going to be doing this dual enrollment where they're heading to school, and then they're getting out, and they're going to another school. So it's a big commitment, and you guys are driving and making sure that they're there, and all these things that are going to happen, right? But I can tell you that it's a great profession, and they're going to have a great future if they, if they stick with it and do all the things that we, we instruct them. But I wanted to bring our Captain Holloway up here because he's kind of in charge of the cadet program, and he wanted to say a couple of words. Well, thanks again to the families that are supporting this program, so.
How are we doing? Captain Dave Holloway, I've been here for 20 years. Very excited to be part of the cadet program. When the chief came to me about it and said that he wanted to do a cadet program, that this would be a great way to get in touch with the community, outreach in the schools, get in touch with our youth, and just, you know, start a good program that, hey, even if these people that come through our program and don't become firefighters, at least they'll, we'll teach them some honor, integrity, courage, you know, the core values of the fire service and the fire department here at Canton. These young men, it says a lot to their, their, how they are as people because to dual enroll and go to high school all day long, and then they were going to school Tuesday and Thursday nights, and then all day on Saturday. They were going to school to finish this Fire One program, and then for their senior year, they will do the same thing to finish the Fire Two program. So I think it says a lot to them, and I'm glad that we could recognize them tonight. And I'm very honored that these are our first two, and hopefully many more. Thank you.
Maybe we could get a picture with you guys.
So do you guys want to come up here with your families? Come up here in the front with your families? It'll take a big picture. What? Oh, no. Well, we'll just have to change that, Mr. Holloway. Joe, thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe. Congratulations. Thank you for all your work. Congratulations. All right. Good news. Okay, great. Now we are going to do the public hearing for approval of the 2024 CDBG program year and annual action plan. So can I have a motion to begin the public hearing?
Madam Supervisor, I move to open the public hearing to hear comment on the Advisory Council recommendations for the fiscal year 2024 Community Development Block Grant Program at 7:14 PM.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snideman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing is open. I'll just do a summary quickly. The CDBG Advisory Council is submitting its recommendations for projects and project funding for the fiscal year 2024 Community Development Block Grant Program. The Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, requires an annual action plan to be submitted for this program year. The annual action plan has been available to the public since May 27th for the 30-day public comment period, and this meeting represents our second public hearing. And it will be open, let's see, the 30-day public comment period for the program will end on June 26, 2024. All comments will be recorded and submitted to HUD at that time. Director Trumbull, do you want to add anything to this?
Sure. Just a brief overview of the programs that the CDBG Advisory Council had recommended. Very similar to the allocation of last year with one addition, giving some money to First Step, Neighborhood Legal Services, the Canton Youth Connection Program, or all the similar ones that we did in 2023. The new one for '24, which is one we've seen in the past, is the Wayne Metro Subsidence, subsidence payments for rental assistance. They came off for a couple of years because there was a significant amount of the money from the COVID, CDBG subsidence payments, so those have now fallen off. So we reintroduced this money back through this program. Other significant, which is similar to the previous years, is the housing rehabilitation program for low to moderate income people who need some assistance renovating their property. And the new one that we do, every year we choose one for the township property to repair as well. This year, it is the Victory Park ADA Accessible Pathways to get the sidewalks up and appropriate there. The sidewalk is in really bad shape. The concrete's in really bad shape there. So that is the big project for this year. These are the projects the Advisory Council had recommended. The public comment period is open. We've had it posted in the Finance Department, and we have not heard any comments to this point. But other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, any comments at all regarding the CDBG program? One person online, if you want to comment online, I believe it's Star69, which will let us know if you have any comments. I don't see any comments online. No comments online. Any comments in the room, then? No comments in the room? No comments in the room? Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board close the public hearing at 7:17 PM.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Any comments from the board or questions regarding the CDBG program?
I think all the programs that were, all the programs that were chosen, where I looked through, I went through the list, as you mentioned, right now, Wendy. They're pretty, you know, we made good decisions on choosing those, and I know your, the CDBG group and your team does a good job of that, so thank you for.
Anyone else? All right. Is there some motion to accept it, then?
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt the 2024 Annual Action Plan and authorize the submission of the 2024 Annual Action Plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snideman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Great. Before we move on to the calendar, there are a couple of good, we had some celebrations, more celebrations to do. So Chief Stockline, do you want to talk about the award that Jamie got, that received?
I'd be happy to do that. So I'm proud of Deputy Chief Jamie Strasner. So he was recognized by the state of Michigan, and I'll read the quote from the state. Deputy Fire Chief Jamie Strasner of the Canton Fire Department spends a great deal of time focusing on the mental health of the staff of the department. Canton Fire Department is both a fire department and a licensed advanced life support agency. Chief Strasner runs reports, follow-ups with the crew members, who have responded to high-stress calls, and sits down with them to debrief on a regular basis. He recognizes that keeping mental health is a priority as it reduces the amount of stress, anxiety, and burnout, which is in turn produces a better work-life balance for those who we rely on to take care of in the Canton Township community on a daily basis. So the state of Michigan wanted to recognize him through MDHHS, so congratulations. It's a big honor.
Now Chief Stockline, you want to talk about your reward, award? Or you want someone else to?
Absolutely not.
So Chief Stockline was, is now the chief of chiefs of chiefs of chiefs of the, of the state of Michigan. Want to talk about what that, what that means to, to the state of Michigan?
The state of Michigan, yeah, the Chief of the Year for the state of Michigan. So it's quite an honor, be voted on by your peers, right? So they, through the entire state, and I'm humbled by it, and I was surprised. And I couldn't do that without the support of great staff behind me and the support of the board, being able to, to do that, right? To make a difference in the state and be up in Lansing and be, be throughout the state to fight for the issues that are going to matter for us and to bring funding back to the fire department. So without your support, I wouldn't have that award. But it's, it's very humbling, humbling, and without words. So it's, it's a nice award.
Thank you. And Chief Mao got an award today, too. So Chief, could you please talk about that? Went to Lansing for this also.
Today, I'm very fortunate, like Chief said, we are on the backs of those that came before us, and are the officers and the staff that work with us, and the strength and the support from the folks I'm sitting next to and the board. So thank you. The Indian American Legislative Day recognized myself, Sheriff Burchard from Oakland County, and the Police Chief from Farmington Hills for our support in safety and security. And I'll read from this, of Indian Americans in Michigan to help build a harmonious society through social, civil, and community engagement. So it's quite an honor to be at the Capitol today, to be able to speak in front of many folks, many elected officials, and the children who spoke today on behalf of the Indian community. To see the, the strength and the, the intelligence and the future before us was pretty cool. So it was a good day.
So why don't the three of you come up with your awards? I don't know if Jamie brought his, but I know, I asked you to bring it. Come on up. We need another picture. Come up in the front here, guys. You can share holding your awards. All these award winners today. Good job, team. Good job. I like chocolates. Thanks, Joe. Who else can we embarrass today? All right, thanks. Next, we have the consent calendar. Can I have a motion to pass the consent calendar?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider second reading and adoption of amendments to Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinances, and to add provisions for electric vehicle infrastructure. C2, consider second reading and adoption of amendments to the Code of Ordinances and the zoning ordinance to amend several sections related to fences, walls, and borders. C3, consider award of CDBG housing rehabilitation contracts. And item C4, consider adoption of a resolution for approval of application for additional MERS service credit by an employee.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we move to the general calendar. Item G1, consider increasing one blanket purchase order for municipal services.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the budget amendment listed above and to increase the attached PO for Halt Fire Incorporated from $15,000 to $30,000.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Fleet Services staff extensively use blanket purchase orders for acquisition of goods and services at varying quantity throughout the year. Blanket purchase order limits are generally set once at the beginning of the fiscal year based on historical average costs. Fleet has a need to increase the current blanket purchase order for Halt Fire Incorporated due to increased cost of parts in an unforeseen but necessary repair that required the purchase of a new foam pump for fire engine I-9, I'm sorry, 19E7, at a cost of $9,337. The purchase of the new foam pump alone accounted for over 62% of the total amount budgeted in the original blanket purchase order. Halt Fire is used for parts to repair 12 different fire vehicles, including engines, heavy rescue trucks, ambulants, and the 100-foot ladder truck. The existing blanket purchase order requires an amendment as follows. PO is listed, Halt Fire Incorporated, from $15,000 to $30,000 using account number as listed. Director Norwood's not here. Do you want to add to that, John Salinas?
Just a quick comment. This is an increase just for any unforeseen equipment failures that may happen for the rest of the year, just to make sure that we can get our emergency vehicles, life safety vehicles, back on the road as quickly as possible. So just an increase in a blanket PO for any unforeseen that may occur again for the rest of the year.
Chief Stockline, do you want to add anything?
Ah, this is maintenance. They repair them for me. We just use them, but it's definitely needed on our fire trucks.
Any comments or questions from the board? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G2, consider waiving the bidding process and approval of the emergency repair of Fire Department ambulance 22-S3.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the emergency repair of Fire Department ambulance 22-S3 by Kodiak Emergency Vehicles at 10120 West Grand River Highway, Grand Ledge, Michigan 48837, the amount of $14,903.89 plus 20% contingency of $2,980.78 for a total amount not to exceed $17,884.67.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snideman. The Fire Department's ambulance 22-S3 has significant front-end damage due to being in an accident. 22-S3 is a 2022 Braun Industries ambulance body that is mounted on a Ford F-550 chassis. Repair of the vehicle is requested due to the age. Two years old, mileage 40,185, and cost of replacement. The purchase price of 22-S3 was $275,025. Fleet Services obtained two estimates for repairs of 22-S3, one from SARA Superior Collision Center and the other from Kodiak Emergency Vehicles. Fleet attempted to get a third estimate from Blackwell Ford, but their facility could not accommodate the repair due to the size of the vehicle. SARA estimated the cost to repair at $25,164.85. The estimated cost to repair Kodiak is $14,903.89. Due to the significant difference in estimates, it is requested that repairs be approved through Kodiak Emergency Vehicles. Fleet would also prefer to use Kodiak for the repairs because Kodiak is a dealer of Braun Industries, the manufacturer of the ambulance body. Time for Kodiak to complete the work is approximately four to five weeks. In addition to the estimate at 20% contingency equal to $29.80 and $0.78 is being requested as it is possible that the final cost of repair could exceed the estimate due to unforeseen damage and extra labor. This would bring the total repair cost up to an amount not to exceed $17,884.67. A sign-off on this request was submitted to the MSD Fire and Finance Directors and the Township Supervisor for emergency approval. This will be an emergency repair. We are seeking approval to move forward with repair as this meets the health, safety, or welfare requirements. So an emergency is defined as immediate threat to health, safety, or welfare of the township for our citizens, and we have a waiver of purchasing rules, emergency, as listed. John Salinas, do you want to add anything?
Nothing further on this agenda item.
Chief Stockline, did you want to add anything? I think there was a question.
Yeah, there was a question, and that was regarding of our response time being an ambulance down, and we do have a backup squad that we're using right now, and that's a 2016. So that's why there's the importance of getting this on. Those vehicles have over 200,000 miles on them, so they're, they're in a backup situation for a reason. And so moving forward with this, and then speaking with Deputy Hover today, we will be talking with MMRA to have the insurance claim refunded to us for the amount of these repairs. We'll work with MMRA on that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Michael?
Was everybody okay in the accident?
That's the important thing, right? And yes, we had, our employees were okay and on the scene there. The patients that, and the other vehicles were okay.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G3, consider authorization of a purchase order to Decima LLC for reconstruction of the admin and public safety parking lot.
Madam Supervisor, I move to issue a purchase order to Decima LLC for the reconstruction of the administration and public safety parking lot in the amount of $3,123,455.51, and to approve the, the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Engineering Services is requesting a purchase order in the amount of $3,123,455.51 to Decima LLC. This includes a bid price of $2,623,455.51 plus a $500,000 contingency. This contingency is set at this amount because there were requested plan changes after the bid prices were received that increased some quantities as well as contingency for unforeseen issues. Deputies, John, do you want to add anything?
Sure. Just a couple of quick notes. Once approved, if approved by the board, I know Charles and his engineering team are ready for a pre-con meeting. During that pre-con meeting with Decima, we're going to execute contracts, bonds, insurance, and then we'll start the, the planning of the PD's portion first, which they're estimating the start to be after July 4th for the public safety side, and then rough substantial completion for both sides in 2025. We're going to look at temporary parking locations. I know we've been discussing with the library, and there might be some other ancillary parking on campus for folks. Then another quick note as well, this does not include the front portion of the parking lot, and we do have, in our new capital improvement program, we have funds rolling over for the next three years for crack seal coating in various parking lots throughout the township, because I know that was a question as well.
Thank you. Could you describe the state of the parking lot, public safety?
Yeah, sure. And, and another aspect that goes along with this is the public safety fencing that is required by lean to be compliant on the public safety side. So that is also included in this. A lot of the parking back there, I know we see some exposed conduit coming up from the concrete at a lot of locations, which that conduit services are video cameras. So you can only do so much patching until it becomes a bigger issue. So that'll help with all of our conduit issues, which is another. So that'll help with all of our conduit issues, which is another topic that we met with our ITI Service Department to outline some areas where they would like conduit ran as well for other additional cameras, for fiber that might be coming in there as well. So we worked with them. And we also worked with our security consultants. So we're going to have some repositioning of some light poles that are going to require us to have some more cameras to protect the infrastructure in the back as well. So it's a long time overdue. I know this was discussed prior to my arrival at Canton Township, and I know it's been bid out several times. Surprisingly, this bid has came back. It was a little bit more cost-effective than the last one, so that's a good sign for us as well. And Decima has done a couple of projects with us recently in the township, so we have a little bit of understanding on how they're going to operate as well.
Correct. And as you said, when construction costs went up, we had to pull back on this one, and we have conduit that's coming up through the concrete.
Yeah, in multiple locations. You know, it's going to, it could puncture tires. We have camera loss, so there's a lot of different areas too. Potholes that are also some routes where you're trying to, you know, get emergency vehicles out quickly. You have to avoid them. So it's just, overall, it's time. It's been a long time coming, too.
We'll be laying more conduit and even adding extra space down there.
Correct. We add an extra for electric vehicle infrastructure as well.
And some of the antennas that are coming in too, emergency antennas. Okay. Any questions or comments from anyone? It's Tanya.
I just have one question for you, John, that was this the only bid that came in?
No, we had multiple bids, and Decima was the most cost-effective and also fell and scored the highest in responsible contracting as well.
I just wanted to make sure of that. And I also wanted to comment that, as you know, we are investing in infrastructure in the community. I think we are doing, we are also, we have another item on the agenda where we are working with Army Corps of Engineers on, you know, assessing the flood situation. So we are doing all, everything necessary to, you know, keep the, keep the infrastructure of this township up to par so that, you know, in the future, we, this was already planned, and we don't have to invest in this in the future. And this is, this has been there in the Capitol CIP for a long time. I remember two years ago, we talked about this. And we are also investing in the flooding assessment too, so we can do both things at the same time.
What else? Michael?
Was it intentional not to put the design of the fence in the background for the RBA? I just haven't seen it in a while. I know there's been some modifications.
I don't think it was intentional that it did, all the bid specs and the bids did include the fencing. I know it was a lot of back and forth in the previous bids where we had it surrounding the entire parking lot, and now we've cut it down to a certain location just servicing the public safety side only. I'm not sure why it's not in, but I do know it's accounted for in the bid specs and in the bid.
Okay, so we are only fencing public safety?
That's correct.
Okay, I was unaware of that. All right.
Not to mention some locations for the Dropbox though as well.
What's that?
The Dropbox location as well will be, have a camera on it and fencing.
Okay. And then is it because of the responsible contracting ordinance that we only put in the one bid? Or, because typically we see multiple bids when we receive them back?
No, he did, we did have several bids on it, is what he said.
Right. And typically, the Board of Trustees reviews those bids and sees them in the RBA.
Oh, you mean the-
But there's only one bid document. There's not like a bid tally sheet, which is usually there, and we can see all of the people who bid on it. That's, there's just a couple of things I'm like, oh, there's, there's no bid, the other bids aren't in here, and there's, there's no design of the, of the parking lot. So like, I would have never known that we were only doing the public safety fencing. But I'm-
We decided on that about eight months ago when the cost came back with public safety side and the administrative building side. And to save costs, we just went with public safety. That is the most damaged parking lot right now. And we can do that. We can give the rest of the bids if you want. We can send that-
My vote is in contingent upon it. I just, you know, I mean, this is, this is less than bids when we had been out in the past. So I'm very comfortable with where we've, especially in the market where we kind of came in. But, but yeah, I just, it's hard to vote on something when you don't have all the bids and you don't see the design element. Because, you know, again, like the aesthetics of the fence is important, you know. You want it to be secure, but you don't want it to look like a prison, essentially, because Canton has certain standards. And when you treat people like criminals, sometimes you invoke that kind of behavior. So it's just, it's helpful to see what we're approving.
We can put it up on the screen right now if you want to see it.
Sure, that'd be helpful.
Does John have a design with you, John, or Patrick?
Do not have a design?
Email it to me, and I can put it up also.
While they're doing that, I can add something else to the parking lot there that is added cost. And that's where the fire vehicles are going to be coming in and out, as well as the garbage trucks. Currently back there, it's just regular blacktop, and that's why it's corroding. We're rolling 90,000-pound vehicles across those surfaces. And, you know, we have to have reinforced concrete, and I believe it is 18 inches thick. So that adds a lot of cost to that, just for the fire department vehicles alone. And for garbage trucks that are going to be coming to that.
Yeah, especially over the conduits that are now exposed.
If the design standard is solely for public safety, I'm comfortable if we don't put that up for like, security reasons. That's, that's fine. We can move on to the next item.
And can we get a copy of the bid tabulation sheet, if you can email it to us?
I think that was in there. It's, the other bid is in, but I see something that looks like a bid tabulation responsible, and it's in a memo form, right?
Responsible contracting scores.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, so they're two firms.
Yeah.
Okay.
Asphalt specialists.
Yeah.
Okay, I see. Okay, thank you.
Right. The, yeah. Okay. And that's why my question was like, so the bid is the front end of the evaluation process? This would be the scoring at the end of the evaluation? So if it's a product of the responsible contracting policy that we don't need to look at the bids because we're going through extra steps in evaluating who the qualif, like, who the most responsible bidder is as opposed to who the lowest qualified bidder is, because of higher standard, then that, then I won't look for the bid tally sheets going forward. And I'll just pay attention to the responsible contracting memo.
At the end. Okay.
That makes sense.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. That was G3. G4, issuing a purchase order to Land Matters for the acquisition of rights of ways and easements to support the township's construction projects.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the above-listed budget amendment to award a contract and issue a purchase order to Land Matters in the amount of $50,000.
Sorry. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Engineering Services is requesting a purchase order be issued to Land Matters to assist in the acquisition of rights of way and easements for future construction projects. Engineering Services requests that the PO be issued for $50,000. John, you're on again.
Nothing further to add on this comment. I just know this is a big step for us to help in the acquisition, to speed up a lot of these road projects for us. So we are excited to get this one going.
It also includes sidewalks, is that correct?
Correct, yes, it does.
Questions or comments? Steven?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Director. In the work we've done in, on the roads, specifically Ford Road and other roads where we've needed right-of-way, has, how has this organization performed in terms of getting us that right-of-way?
For MDOT or our engineering department in general, I think we're making a lot of progress recently, and it's good to see. I know there's been plans, big master plans for these road projects. And now to see a lot of them come to fruition, I think is motivating the team to kind of keep them going. And that's, that's one thing that we want to just keep momentum moving along, and I think Charles has done a great job getting that, the board goals and getting those projects off the ground and moving along on his end.
And this organization has been helpful in doing that?
Yes, definitely. I think a lot of emphasis on locations has been very helpful for us, so we know where to focus a lot of our time and effort, which has given us a clear path and understanding of what the master plan, the goal is. So we do appreciate a lot of the feedback and all the assistance on getting this moving forward.
Thank you.
Who else? All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G5, consider award of construction for roadway repair replacement of concrete affected by ASR to Mark Anthony Contracting and consider increasing purchase order as listed by $723,800.
Madam Supervisor, I move to increase the subject purchase order in the amount of $723,800 for Spalding-Dedeker to perform construction, administration, inspection, testing, and staking, and to award a construction contract to Mark Anthony Contracting Incorporated for the construction and/or replacement of local concrete roads affected by ASR in the amount of $1,558,228.50 and issue as a purchase order and to approve the budget amendment attached.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Engineering Services is requesting to issue a purchase order to Mark Anthony Contracting for the construction and/or replacement of local concrete roads affected by alkali silica reaction, commonly referred to as ASR in the amount of $1,558,228.50. Further, Engineering Services is also requesting to increase PO as listed by $723,800 for Spalding-Dedeker to perform construction, administration, inspection, testing, and staking on the same project and for the remaining subdivisions impacted by ASR. And I think there's also a question about ASR also. Deputy, if you want to add to that?
One quick note to add. I did get a quick update on the remaining five locations. So we have the Brookside Village, number five, Meadowbrook, one and two, River Park, one and two, and Stonegate, as well as Sunflower, number 12. We spoke to Spalding-Dedeker. They're roughly 85% done on design for those ones as well. So we're going to make a big push to get the rest of those out for bid as well. And the question in regards to ASR, I think that's a battle that we're prepared to fight on with Spalding-Dedeker as our design consultant and testing. So they're going to do a lot of sample testing for us to know before the pour goes in that it has very little to, to none of, of what has been in the ASR initially for all the failed concrete. So they'll be doing the testing for us prior to, and they'll be on-site during the whole construction to evaluate that process, as well as specifically assisting with our engineering department on the specifications of the concrete that we want in the township as well.
Thank you. And you also, at the end of this packet, have the responsible contracting information.
Correct.
All right. Any questions from the group?
Is this, is this project covered by the money we were able to obtain from the state?
Yes. Representative Purry, thank you for bringing that up. Representative Purry was able to get us $5 million towards this project, and so it's helping greatly, yes.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And the county's going to cover some of it also.
Really?
Oh, really?
Good.
That's great.
I didn't know that. That's fantastic.
Diane?
I just was going to say I appreciate Representative Purry and also Commissioner Dobbs for helping us because this is something we've been talking about for years and years, so I'm really happy to see this happen.
Yeah, Executive Evans actually said this should happen, so that's great.
Honestly, I've been here 11 years, and this was discussed like, at my very first meeting when we talked about pheasant-run neighborhoods and ASR in there. Some of that has been fixed under our program, the Rose Millage, but it's amazing that's 15 years and maybe 20 years in the making. So it's good to see them fixing it finally.
That's a good point. Yep, we were able to get help from Warren Evans and Representative Purry. So this is great for us.
Wanted to say something, Mike?
Yeah, it's, I agree, you know, I haven't, so Steven was here four years before me, and, but I remember, as a citizen, I remember when Sunflower tried doing an SAD on Phase 8, and I think the amount assessed to each homeowner to fix this was $10,000. And they didn't, they didn't pass the SAD because people did not want to spend, you know, $10,000. And that started a bigger conversation, because what we found recently was that they weren't the only subdivision that suffered from the alkali silica reaction issue. And what's really cool, not just with doing the Canton Center Road between Ford and Warren, which was a mile stretch of ASR, one of the largest projects in Canton history, is that when we're done with not, you know, this phase and then the next phase, we will have essentially removed every known section of ASR out of Canton Township, which it's not every day that you do this job as a legislator, as an engineering department, as whatever we do, as a supervisor, where you can like physically and tangibly see a huge difference in the future. And, you know, Canton, in 2016, when I was first elected to the, to the board, I couldn't go five feet without running into somebody and hearing about the deplorable state of Canton Township roads and hearing people complain about Canton Township roads. And not, you know, we've, we've got the Local Roads Program that we've been doing for five years now. And in that process, we've increased our Pacer rating by one whole point. Like, that's, that's massive. And I haven't seen a formal analysis, but I, I believe at this point Canton Township has a higher Pacer rating than our neighbors. And that was not the case eight years ago.
I think we raised it by a point or something. They said at the meeting the other day, wasn't it?
Yeah. Like, we, at that point, we had the worst roads in Western Wayne County. And at this point, arguably, we have the best roads in Western Wayne County, which is a huge testament to like, leaving no stone unturned. Whether it's getting reimbursement grants out of the state legislature, working with the county on getting federal highway projects, whether it's our Local Roads Millage and being administered here. But this is a huge, a huge thing, and, and I don't think we would, we would be in the state that we are today if it wasn't for essentially Swanmere, the road in Sunflower 8. So here we are. It's been a long trip. But, you know, by the time this is all said and done, we're going to remove about $7 million worth of concrete cancer out of Canton Township. And that's something I think everybody, including the residents, can hang their hat on. And I'm grateful to Rep. Purry and, you know, Executive Evans and our County Commissioner Melissa Dobbs and your administration for doggedly attacking roads. So thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to concur with the rest of my board members. I was on Swanmere, I think, two weeks ago, and I'm like, okay, this is finally getting fixed. Because I've walked, I just live north of Sunflower, and I've walked these neighborhoods quite a bit. And it's, it's even walking is difficult there. And I just can't imagine, like, when I'm, I drove there. I never tried to drive on Swanmere, but, and I'm thinking, what about the people who actually live here? How much they have endured. And we are, I'm glad that we are doing this because two years ago, when we replaced Canton Center's ASR, I think we are now seeing that how removal of that and doing, investing in that particular road has, now I, when we drive coming from home to township, I come through that section of Canton Center, and it's, it's doing pretty good. And I'm confident that we will make the same kind of changes in our, you know, communities, not just main roads. But this is going to be an investment in different subdivisions, and I'm glad that we are doing this for our residents. And I agree, as we, as Michael said, that when we leave Canton and we drive outside of Canton, we see the difference in our roads and the neighboring roads. So I'm glad that Rep. Purry, Commissioner Dobbs are helping us with this investment.
Thanks. So actually, I was unable, my, the Rose program is great because you couldn't even ride a bike on some of the roads in my neighborhoods. And little by little, we've used the grants in my subdivision, and we've replaced a lot of that. So I really have seen the improvements since 2018, so it's really been great. All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G six, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to replace the burner assembly for one boiler at the admin building.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the contract and approve a purchase order for Rolls Mechanical in the amount of $36,229.65 plus a $10,000 contingency, making the total amount $46,229.65 to upgrade one of the boilers' burning, burner assembly system at the administration building.
I got half supports. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens and Trustee Snyderman. The admin building boilers are 24 years of age with a project, projected lifespan of 30 years plus. Recently, Boiler Number One has experienced numerous issues relating to the burner assembly system. Rather than replacing the entire boiler, MSD Facilities is proposing the replacement and upgrade of the burner assembly. Replacing the burner assembly on Boiler Number One will increase energy efficiency and prolong the life of the equipment. And Deputy Director, actually, John Zalines is really good at this. He's really good at looking at something and fixing it in a different way so we don't spend a lot of money. Thank you. Do you want to talk about that?
Sure. Yeah, we looked at it from multiple angles. The first and foremost, to get a rough number for replacement exceeded the $300,000 mark was just, just an option that we didn't feel that was justifiable. A lot of it had to do with the integrity of the boiler shell, the components, the flow valves, our isolation valves, and the whole circulation system. I know the lifespan is projected for 30 years, but the condition that these boilers are in, infrastructure-wise, minus heat exchanger assembly, could probably last 10, 15 more years. So working with DJ Conley, who does our CSD-1 combustion testing on a yearly basis, and having our state inspections on a yearly basis as well, also indicated that these boilers are in really good shape for the year. And then furthermore, with DJ Conley, they do offer, because it's a Cleaver Brooks Boiler, they offer their burner assembly. And having the, a compatible burner assembly at a cost under $50,000 to ensure the consistency of our boilers, at the same time including, increasing our efficiencies. The boilers right now are roughly 82% efficient. Upgrading the boiler assembly is going to bring us closer to 92% to 93% efficiency, which is roughly right around the, where we went out for bid for the $300,000 boiler replacement. Those were 96% efficient boilers. So we're achieving a very good efficiency level at the same time saving a lot of money. The biggest concern with these, they kept tripping off in the winter because of the boiler assembly, which required staff to have periodic checks. We can't have a burner that's off in the middle of night, overnight, coming into the cooler temperatures and possible frozen pipes. So I think this is the best avenue for us to prolong the life and increase our efficiencies. So we looked at it from multiple angles, and we feel comfortable moving forward with this one, and we're excited to have this upgrade involved.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G seven, consider final plan development district and preliminary site plan for Harvest Arbor.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board doubt the approval of the final plan development district and preliminary site plan for Harvest Arbor, whereas project sponsor has requested final plan development district approval and site plan approval for Harvest Arbor located at the southeast corner of Ford Road and Napier Road, whereas the planning commission reviewed the plan development, plan and plan development agreement and voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the request and with conditions as the request meets the criteria for a plan development and results in definite benefit to the community. And whereas the planning commission reviewed the preliminary site plan application and applicable criteria, voted 7-0 to recommend approval with the conditions as the request meets the requirements of the Charter Township of Canton zoning ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, is hereby approve the final plan development district and preliminary site plan and planning applications as provided in the planned development agreement and planned documents, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, and subject to the applicant revising the building elevations to have masonry to the first floor ceiling line on all elevations.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The applicant proposes to develop 51 single-family homes on the 25 and a half acre parcel located at the southeast corner of Ford Road and Napier Road. There is one public entrance proposed on Ford Road and one emergency vehicle access proposed on Napier Road. The property includes a creek in the southwest corner that is attributable to the Lower Rouge River. The site is vacant and has been used for agriculture for many years. In 2023, the parcel was rezoned from rural agricultural to R2 single-family residential. The applicant proposes to develop the site as a planned development district, which allows for modifications from certain development standards of the zoning ordinance and requires the project to result in definite benefits to the site and to the community. The project sponsor proposes the following definite benefits. Preservation of heavily wooded areas along the creek and Napier Road. Preservation of wetland areas. Internal sidewalks in the open space, including connections to Ford Road and Napier Road. Constructing a sidewalk connection to Parkside Estates South, which will fill a gap along the Ford Road frontage of Parkside Estates South. Forty percent of the site is open space or 10.71 acres, which exceeds the 25% minimum open space required in a planned development. A welcome sign at the northwest corner of the site with enhanced landscaping to define this gateway entrance into Canton. More trees are planted than are required by the zoning ordinance. The homes will be predominantly brick and will have brick to the belt, which means a masonry to the first floor ceiling line, including walkout elevations, and construction of a 106-long left-turn lane or left-turn passing flare on westbound Ford Road at the site entrance. At its meeting on May 6th, the planning commission recommended approval of the final PDD and preliminary site plan subject to conditions. Patrick, do you want to add anything to this?
Nothing else to add other than what's in the report, but I'll be happy to take any questions.
You want to talk about some of the conditions?
So some of the conditions of approval for the site and the planning commission are on the elevations themselves. The proposal from the applicant was that there would be masonry to the first floor ceiling line on all elevations, and that's the intent with the design. So one of the conditions from the planning commission was that all the elevations on the plan sheets show them. And that's just a matter of the applicant showing the plan, that design update on the plan sheets themselves. If the proposed plans are approved by the township board, then the next step will be for the applicant to return with final site plan review. So the planning commission would review the plans again, and the township board would review the plans again. We've also looked at the planning elements for lighting, landscaping, architecture, sidewalks, street designs, parking, et cetera, and those are compliant with the ordinance.
Okay. You also have some under-scheduled regulations and modifications, those other modifications listed also too. I'll just open it up to the board for any questions, and we can look at those while we're asking. Questions?
Patrick answered all my questions this afternoon.
Okay, so the minimum lot width, the R2 district requires a minimum lot width of 100 feet with the minimum lot width of 120 for corner lots. So the minimum lot width proposed is 70 feet. That went down from 80 to 100 to 70, right?
That's correct. And on the plans and in our staff report, there's a series of modifications that are proposed by the applicant. And for a plan development district, there are definite benefits required, and it's also a method to allow for modifications from certain standards of the zoning ordinance where such a modification would design, would result in a design benefit or would result in a better development overall. And so the applicant has requested a series of modifications. The first is a modification from the minimum lot area from 20,000 square feet down to 8,400 square feet. And the purpose of that is to attain the number of lots that are allowed in the underlying zoning district of R2 at two units per acre. It also allows for clustering, so it allows for the balance of the site to be preserved as open space. So for example, the minimum open space in a plan development is 25%. The applicants are proposing 40%, and that additional 15% above the minimum is based on clustering the lots and having that balance of open space. In terms of the open space itself, we look at not just the quantity of it, but the quality of it and where those open spaces are. These open spaces on this site are strategically located on the south and east sides as a buffer to the adjacent residential communities, as well as a central open space area in the middle of the development for the use by the residents or other people in the area that are walking. And then finally, in the southwest area, there's the Stormwater Pond, which is technically open space, but also the creek that runs through there and the adjoining wooded areas. Another modification is from the minimum lot width from 100 feet minimum down to 70 feet. And the clustering and reduction of the lot width is using the same principles the minimum lot area to cluster the lots as, as much as possible and preserve balances of open space. And when we look at developments, we usually, and especially plan developments, not just regular site plans, but in plan developments, we encourage residential developments to try to cluster the allowable units as much as possible to preserve open spaces where that makes sense. So in this case, the applicant has proposed a minimum lot width of 70 feet and a minimum lot area of 8,400 square feet. Much of that comes from reduction in the side yard setbacks. The minimum side yard setback in the R2 district is 15 feet on one side with a total of 35 feet for both of the sides. So the minimum side yard setbacks are essentially 15 feet on one side, 20 feet on another. The applicants have significantly narrowed the side yard setback to five feet on one side with a total of 15 feet for both sides. And oftentimes in residential developments, in the clustering, a lot of that area is made up by clustering, especially in the side yards. Usually with yards, the front yard is the curb appeal and some of the use, the backyard is usually the area where there's privacy, recreation use, things like that. The side yard is sometimes an afterthought where there's the air conditioner or storage or garbage cans or electric gas meters or pathway to the, to the back. So the side yards aren't used as much. So usually when there's clustering, there's some narrowing of those side yards in order to fit in the allowable lots. So there is a proposed reduction in the side yard setback. And then there's also a proposed reduction in the front yard setback, minimum from 40 feet to 25 feet, and a reduction in the minimum rear yard setback from 50 feet down to 30 feet. Then there's also a reduction in the minimum deck setback.
Yeah, the minimum deck setback is interesting because you talk about rear setback, at least 25 feet is maintained, and structure is not greater than four feet above the finish grade, but you're saying, but this PDD would limit a rear yard deck to five feet if the house is built, and you're saying, so what does that limit future homeowners to?
In this case, if there's not a modification from the 25-foot setback for the deck itself, the decks would have to be built at 25 feet. So what that would mean is that if the houses are built, if the rear of the home is built all the way to the rear line of the building envelope, we would be looking at five-foot deep, five-foot-deep decks. And if, so what the homeowner would have to do is either strategically design the house so that the rear of the home did not go to that rear building envelope and that the house didn't go all the way back, and there was some area in the building envelope that allowed for more deck area. Or depending on the orientation of the houses and how they're built, the homeowners could apply in the future for a PDD modification if there was a series of lots that wanted decks that were, say, 20 feet from the rear lot line.
You know, some of us have driven by, and we do have the group here, Michigan Homes is right here. Thank you. If anybody has questions there, but we did drive by some homes that were recommended to us that you had built, showing a couple of things, where the garages were located on the side or on the front, and we saw that the larger homes, I think it was in Novi we went out to, right? That those are the addresses we were given when we went out. We looked at the, the front of the house, and it was large, and the garage door looked okay because it was decorative. I think you had explained that. But then the one concern was the spacing between the houses. We went into Northville and looked at those homes. They were smaller homes, but the spacing was very narrow. And so that was, that's a concern here because now you're going to have larger homes and very little spacing in between.
Right. Good evening, Mike Knowles, N-O-L-E-S, representing MI Homes this evening with the Umler Group. So yes, thank you for your question. One of the, one of the things that sometimes gets lost when we talk about building envelopes is those are minimums. So you also have in front of you four houses that we worked on together to create architecture specifically for this site. One of the things that you'll notice is when we have a minimum lot of 70 feet wide and we have a 15-foot combined side yard setback, that leaves 55-foot-wide building envelope. So that's what we're talking about here. Now, if you look at the houses that we've submitted, two of the houses are 40 feet wide on the base house. So if you were to buy one of those base houses, there would be an additional 15 feet still in the building envelope. Theoretically, that homeowner could add on a side addition at some time in the future to have a, have a maximum, I'm sorry, a minimum building separation between their neighbor of 15 feet. But as a practical matter, MI Homes is going to be selling to the general public, who are going to choose House A, House B, House C, House D. We have four of them that are in front of you on your package, and they range anywhere from 40 to 52 is the widest house that you have there. In a 50-foot building envelope, you can see that we're always leaving some space on the table, if you will, so that minimum 15-foot side yard separation grows depending on what the homeowners select on their house, which house that they select, if that makes sense to you. So 15-feet total combined side yard setback is somewhat standard on a 70-foot-wide lot. And so I'd like to kind of circle back, if I will, to sort of understand the play here, which is clustering the houses, as Patrick did a fine job of explaining, it's a sustainability play, right? It's a development that has 40% open space as opposed to 25% open space. Those are just numbers on a page, but you, but think about this. The whole site is 25 acres. 10 acres of the site are, which would normally be dispersed in lots, to have bigger lots, are preserved in open space. So that's the creek he's talking about, that's attributable to the rouge. That's the woods that's on site that's being untouched. That are the buffers along both Ford Road and Napier Road that you see there, the berms along those roads, where we have nice, wide landscape buffers. You'll notice in some of the staff reports, 145 more trees than are, than are required so that we can build some nice berms with some good screening for these homes. Mr. Sloan mentioned the east and the south side, we've increased the buffer between the back of the lots. The original submittal, a year and a half ago or better, had those lots going all the way to the edge of the property. Now we've got open space to help buffer our existing neighbors. We've increased the preservation of the two wetlands, not, not just the creek, but the one in the southeast corner and the one where we moved the entrance. The entrance is now more centered on the site. It used to be offset further to the east so that we could preserve that wetland. And you can see on the site plan how the path meanders around that wetland to preserve that wetland. The center space, the central park, if you will. So instead of just creating open spaces randomly, there's open spaces that can be used to develop, create community connections there, where people have paths to go to and sort of a central park in their community. So all of these things work together to create a better, more sustainable neighborhood. In addition, we've talked about sort of the front entry versus the side entry ad nauseam over, over, you know, the multiple, the seven public meetings that we've had. But there's also a sustainability factor there too, which is you don't have as much concrete paving for your driveways. On a side entry garage, you need additional driveway length and an apron to be able to make the turn into the garage, whereas you have less impervious area. Another thing that you'll see is that we have agreed to have electrical prep for the attics, for solar panels, and electrical prep for the garages, for charging stations within these homes. In addition, I heard some folks talking about In addition, I heard some folks talking about flooding earlier. This is maybe the next step here, but we've already had our stormwater management reviewed, and we're, we have more volume than is required by the minimum for our stormwater management. So when you look at all of the factors that we're putting forth, that was the concept for this development that we put together, was clustered lots to be able to create a community on this 25 acres. And that's what we've done here, and that's where we are today. The give, there's always the give and take, right? The give is, they're smaller lots. They're closer together. The only way to be able to create all of those wonderful open spaces is to have the houses closer together. And so that's really what the play on this particular community has been from the inception. It's changed quite a bit over the, like I say, the last year and a half as we worked with the township and with their consultants, with the recommendations from the planning commission, with the recommendations from this board. And I think we have a really fantastic development here, but that's one of the things that helps to explain, how did the houses get on such small lots and so close together, is because they're clustered to be able to create those open spaces that give the development really its quality.
Do you have, have you built anywhere else in Canton? I'm just curious.
I have. As far as MI Homes, I'm not sure, which one? Park Creek? Park Creek is one of MI Homes' developments. So I'm a civil engineer and surveyor that I work for several different builders in these entitlement projects, and MI Homes does have one in Canton Park Creek, and I think they have others as well.
Where is Park Creek? I'm just, oh, get his hand back. Okay, okay. Stephen, you had gone there.
Yeah. No, I didn't go to Park Creek.
You went up to Park Creek.
But I also, I was, I went up to Novi and also to Northville and looked at the homes. I think there's a lot to like here. I, when I went up to Novi, and I think at least a couple of the models looked the same to me in that neighborhood. I don't know if they're exactly the same or what. And looking at them, I thought they were beautiful homes. As was mentioned, there was concern about the front entry garages not being standard in this part of our town, but I thought they looked great, honestly. I thought they're not, because the homes are larger, they're not, they're not a big percentage of the facade of the home. Also, it's not the situation where it's a garage that sticks out into the yard. It's integrated into the home, so it's like one facade. So I'm not concerned at all with that. And, you know, and I kind of view this area as like a bridge between Cherry Hill Village and that concept and the subdivisions along Ford Road. In fact, down Napier or Cherry Hill, there is a subdivision, River, Rivers Edge? Or I can't remember the name of it. Is that right?
Rivers Edge.
Oh, wow. All right. And those homes are smaller, but they do, they're beautiful, and they have front entrance garages. They're kind of separate from the village because they're a little bit to the west. But I think this kind of is a nice connection between those two neighborhoods. Yes, I mean, we always like to see more space between the houses, especially in this side of town, but, you know, I think there's a difference in the generations, between the generations that bought houses in the 80s, 90s, and early 2000s and the generations that are coming up now. I don't think they're as interested in yards, owning yards themselves. I think they're more interested in common space. I've talked to a couple of real estate developers about that, and I think having the common space, where the common space is part of the association, so they don't have to worry about mowing it, the association gets it mowed. And yeah, their backyards are shorter, but they back up to common space. And so you, you know, you don't really know where your yard ends and the common space begins. So that, that to me is something that we have to start considering as a community and as a board, what the people who are, the homeowners of the future are going to want. And I think it's a nice, it's a nice way you've developed it in order to achieve that. I'm glad to see the prepping for electric vehicles and solar panels. That's great. Does the sidewalk continue onto Napier Road in this neighborhood?
Yes, it does. So there's a public frontage path along both Ford Road and Napier, and then where it crosses the creek, there's a boardwalk so that we don't impact the creek with the sidewalk. So it's all the frontage plus sidewalks of both sides of the streets, plus the internal pathways that we have on there. So it's a really great pedestrian connectivity neighborhood.
Do you, I don't have the map. Will it connect to a sidewalk to the south of you, or is there still a gap?
There's a gap. There's nothing to connect to on Napier Road, but we are closing the gap going east to Parkside South.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And there was just, let me see, oh, and then just to comment on housing prices, because I've seen some social media comments about it, and, you know, the houses to the south are selling for amazing amounts now, and some that I didn't think I'd ever see in Canton. Those houses, when they were built, were not million-dollar houses either. Were you involved, Mike?
I was, I was. So you're talking about Westridge?
Yeah.
And that's a Toll Brothers neighborhood. It's 265 units, I believe, in there. And yeah, they were 750, 800 when we first opened the first phase before the clubhouse was built, and then now they're north of a million. And it's a really, it's, it's, it's a benefit if you're selling real estate. It's not a benefit if you're trying to buy real estate and you're trying to buy your first house and you're trying to finance it with the interest rates the way that they are currently. So it's, it's a challenge to have affordable pricing, affordable housing. I wouldn't necessarily classify this as affordable housing. We believe that 600, 650 is probably sort of the average price point here, with it creeping up to 750, depending on, you know, finishing out and options and those types of things. I think we could even see houses in there for up to 800, which is less than a million two to the south, but it's not exactly, my son and, my daughter's getting married in July, she's not going to be buying her first house here. Well, neither did I. You know, we all started somewhere and worked our way up. But at least it provides more of a housing spectrum for your residents, that they're not all on, when you have all houses, or a big part of the area are these three-quarter acre lots or half an acre lots that are million-dollar houses, three-car side entries. Not everybody can get into those. And so this, this is a nice compromise where it's not a compromise buyer, but it's a nice entry point that is more attainable for more people, I guess I would say.
And what is the, the Westridge you were talking about? What is the spacing between the units there?
So Westridge lots are 100 footers.
100-foot lots.
Yeah. And so to get on a side entry garage, you really need a minimum of 90 feet, and it's preferable to be 95 feet wide, because you have to have 25 feet from the side of the garage of the concrete driveway so that you can pull out and then, and then turn. Otherwise, you're doing a 10-point turn to get into the garage if it's, if it's too short.
That, that was going to be my last point. Thanks for reminding me. I like having the smaller driveways. I think it's environmentally better. I, when you look at a big house and you see a lot of concrete next to it, that's not attractive to me. And so having the garage the way it's situated, I never really love it when the garage sticks out, but these don't do that, and it's a short driveway. And so honestly, the wider lots you're accommodating, as you said, you know, 10 to 15 feet of just concrete for those things, not grass.
Yeah, 22, right. You're absolutely right, Trustee Snyderman. And I think that one of the other things you'll notice, which I may have pointed out, and maybe it was a planning commission meeting, I had some slides previously about this topic, which is when you're driving through a neighborhood that is three-car side entry garage neighborhoods with the snout nose garages that you're talking about that stick out in front of the house, you're not getting the street view of a 90-degree angle to the homes. You're not looking at the front of the homes. You're looking in your, in your peripheral, you're driving down the street. And so what you're seeing are two garage doors on every single house. And let's face it, particularly in production housing, the side elevations are not generally our best foot forward. And so you're looking at this, because there's more space between the houses, they're sticking out in front of the houses, and it's all garage. And so you end up with a streetscape that looks very garage door heavy, rather than in this case, which is sort of contrary to what you might think. With the front entry garage, it's on the front of the house, but your streetscape, you're getting more of a, of a view of the front facades all the way down the street, and it makes a better, it makes a better street view.
Did you do the development to the east also? Because those are larger lots also, correct?
So that's Pulte's, Parkside South to the east, and I did not do that. I worked with Pulte on some issues when I was still at Toll Brothers together, they, with their connections, their utility connections and their path connections. But I do a lot of work with Pulte, so I've represented those houses as well. Those are sides, and those lots are, those lots are wider. They're, I want to say they're 100-foot lots in there as well.
So just to point out to the board then, when you're looking at a development in the middle, developments on either side that have wider lots, so you're seeing, there's a difference there. There's a stark difference there.
For sure. And one of the things that the planning commission and this board asked us to do was to not compromise on the houses. Okay? So we're going to have smaller lots, we're going to preserve open space, we're going to have less impervious area. These are all great environmental, sustainable features. Let's not compromise on the houses. Let's make the houses look like they belong in the neighborhood. And I think you can see from the package, particularly the two that we just designed particularly for this site, are really fantastic-looking houses. I have them, if you want to see them.
I have it here. I think we have it in the packet, don't we? Yeah. I'm going to, we're going to put this up on the screen for them. I don't know if Joe can. Is it in the packet? What page is it, Patrick?
It's in the, it's in the, it's in the packet.
I can put it up.
I have a question. The, the middle area where, you know, you have the creeks coming in, is that, are you going to be, is that like a common area? But this, these are all like back of the houses, right? So is that like, like a pond or something that you would, would you mow that area?
Yeah, so the preserved area on the west side of the creek, which is that, sort of that southwest triangle there, wooded, it's separated by the creek, that's going to be a conservation easement. So that's not going to be mowed, that's going to be left natural.
Okay.
On the other side of the creek, on the development side of the creek, that's where we have the stormwater management pond. And so you will have houses that back to the stormwater management pond, but not directly to the creek or the preserved woods.
So, you know, the central part, I'm asking you about the central part.
Oh, the central part, yes. So the central part will be landscaped, grass, paths going to the middle. I think we are showing a gazebo or something and some benches around the middle. So it's more of a community open space in the backyard, and it's often been used several, you know, on a lot of developments where you do have smaller lots, but you have a lot of open space. You can, if you put those open spaces in the rear of the yards, you don't feel like you have a small yard. As mentioned before, you don't have to mow and take.
Yeah, I am, I am not for big yards. So I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to make a point here that, that's what I want, how much of it you are mowing here?
Yeah.
And how much, how much part? Because I, two weeks ago, I was listening on the radio, and they're saying that the lawns in America is the biggest crop. That's what we are spending our money on, and we are mowing all these just, you know, because we have, want to have a fabulous curb appeal. But I think the next generation that buys these houses, they, they might not want lawns. They might want something that's smaller and, you know, this, it's, if you have some common areas that people can come and mingle and, you know?
Yes.
Some walkable paths, some, some woods, they can like, they have some trails in there. So I am, I am okay with that. I'm pretty, I'm, I really like this. That's, that's the reason I, I was asking you, because I am not, I know the houses are close to each other. As a result, there is much less grass to mow.
Right.
And I am, and the amount of investment that we put into it, the amount of water that we waste in mowing our lawns and trying to maintain the curb appeal, I think that causes quite a bit of, I feel that we are wasting a lot of water and resources in doing this. So I really like this plan. And yeah, front-facing, I've, I've seen houses in some neighborhoods in Canton which are much newer, and they have front-facing garages, and especially, I think, the last one where you have like the three garages. I probably have seen it, one of the southern part of Canton, and they have, I don't know who built those houses, but yeah, they look nice. They look pretty, pretty neat, so.
Thank you, yes, I agree.
Yeah, so I, I like the idea of having closer lots and leaving more open spaces so that we are not mowing and mowing and wasting water on them.
So a lot of open spaces isn't just lawn. I mean, I see the kids across the street playing, and they don't have lawn, but they can play around their house. So that's the thing is, you have smaller lots and closer houses, then they've got to go to the common area versus being able to play at their house. So that's a disadvantage for little ones that I see playing. But Patrick, I don't see it in the package, how the, the house looks. I don't see it. Do you have it?
Are we looking at the front elevations?
No, the physical design.
Yeah, the design.
I saw that on page 200, and it's right before the traffic impact study. That's like the Aspen design and all that stuff that you put in here?
Oh, there it is. I can share.
Yeah, there's four, there's four houses. The, let me give you the names of the, the two we started with, and then we added two additional ones that we designed for this site.
Yeah, 232, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the Aspen and the Magnolia were originally proposed for this project, but the Ashford and the Windsor were developed specifically for this product, for this project. MI Homes had those products, but just not with the front-facing garages. So they modified some of their, their big estate houses to make it work for the front-facing and the, and the smaller lots. And yeah, so that's the Aspen and the Magnolia. And if you go to, so the Windsor, you'll see here, you see half a house here because you have a rendering in the upper right, because we changed it from a side entry garage to a front entry garage specifically for this house. And then my favorite one is the Ashford down below. This was specifically designed for, for this site, and the idea was to not compromise on the architecture, to make the house still look like it belongs in the neighborhood with, with all of the other Pulte and Toll Brothers homes, but it's on a smaller lot. So it's got the front-facing garage and the more sustainable, and it has a, has a fantastic curb appeal for, for this house, you know? So I think, I think MI Homes has done a, done a great job of, of, you know, hitting, hitting one out of the park with, with this particular development. We're very proud of it.
And you had also gone. What are your thoughts?
The, the front garage, that was very nice. Quite, sorry, they are quite close together, though. That was my only concern, but like Stephen said, talking to a lot of the realtors now, you know, younger families aren't really looking for big yards. They maybe want the large homes, but not the large.
Even older families. I'm 56, and my side yard is six feet on each side. I'm in Plymouth, but, you know, so it's a little bit more the older, smaller in-town lots, but, you know, there's not so much to maintain, and that's a good thing in my book.
Michael, did you have anything?
All of my questions have been asked and answered.
All of my questions have been asked and answered.
Any other questions or comments? Not sharing anymore. Okay, good. All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Item G8, consider approval of financial obligation certifications for storm drainage assessment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize the Finance Director to sign the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers self-certification of financial capability for the storm drainage assessment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The township is partnering with Army Corps of Engineers to perform an assessment of the drainage in various sectors of the township in light of the recent flooding that occurred in the township in the previous few years. In order to perform the assessment, the Army Corps of Engineers, who did present to us at a study session about a month ago, is requiring a 50% match by the township in the total project. The total project is $300,000. They're asking for a 50% match for us for $150,000. And of course, that can include in-kind services. So if we do some of the surveys, that goes towards that, our time goes towards that, which will not require additional cash outflow. Also, if we work with another, somebody else, another, I think we were talking about Wade Trim or something like that, if we work with them on some of this, another piece of it, that would also be included. So any work we do towards this effort includes our $150,000. So we are reallocating existing budget dollars to absorb this potential expenditure. Let's see. Director Trumbull, do you want to add anything?
No, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
So the big thing right now is they spoke about in their last, in their meeting to us is they need to look at, they basically need the signatures to determine who the Finance Director is, et cetera, et cetera, all the signatories are. And then they submit it to their people to get approvals to move it back, to move the project forward. So that's why we need to do this, to basically say it's okay for us to move this project forward and keep moving. Any questions from the board? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item G9, I don't know, I keep shrinking here.
Mine too.
Consider approval to award vending contract to Continental Cafe LLC.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award the contract for Canton Township Facility vending machine services to Continental Cafe LLC pending legal review.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Modern Vending had previously held the vending machine contract with Canton Township since 2012. In 2023, Modern Vending Services Incorporated was purchased by Continental Cafe, and the contract has since expired. Canton Township issued an RFP in March 2023, and two companies responded, Continental Cafe and the Bureau of March's Blind People. A committee was formed to evaluate and score the two companies, and as a result, are recommending Continental Cafe LLC for the Canton Township's facilities vending services contract. Director Homberger's not here. Does he have a representative?
I'm standing in for Director Homberger tonight. I was not involved in this process, but I know enough to be dangerous. So you can always pass any questions or information along if needed.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
It says pending legal review. Is that review of the contract or review of the vending products?
Contract.
Okay, just checking. But Clerk's office would be willing to participate in that review process if it's the food.
Eating all the candy?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item G10, it's shrinking again. Consider approval to extend the contract of printing, sorting, and distribution of the Discover brochure.
Madam Supervisor, I move to extend the contract of the printing, sorting, and distribution to Grand Blank Printing for two additional additions. That's interesting. For the Discover brochure covering the fall 2024, winter 2025, and spring/summer 2025 for a total cost of $31,600.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. On May 10, 2022, the Board of Trustees approved RBA G2 to award a contract to Grand Blank Printing Company for the printing, sorting, and distribution of four editions of the Discover brochure from fall 22 to February 24. Grand Blank Printing Company has provided the township with quality services as a reliable and trustworthy provider, and has agreed to honor the contract extension and prices referenced in the 22 contract for the following two additional additions of Canton Leisure Services Discover brochure, fall '24, winter '25, and spring/summer '25. This detailed program guide includes a comprehensive listing of all the facility and programs offering leisure services we'll have available. Based on mutual agreement, Canton Leisure Services is recommending extending the contract for the printing, sorting, and distribution of the Discover brochure. That was awarded Grand Blank Printing Company for an additional additions at an annual cost of $31,600. So Director, let's see, no, Homberger's not here. So John, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I think the RBA did a nice job of providing some background. So this is just, like, like it says, extending for two additions of our current Discover, which is very popular. And residents continually tell us this is where they get most of their information about our programs and services. So we were pleased that the price has carried through. And anytime you can do that, I think, is a bonus. So this would get us to this fall and winter and next spring/summer's edition.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item G11, consider request to upgrade administrative building and disaster recovery data centers.
If the board doesn't protest, I will read all five of these motions as one motion.
Sure.
Thank you. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the creation of a purchase order for $390,000 payable to Avalon Technologies for the purchase of data center hardware and implementation services. To approve a purchase order for $69,521.30 payable to Dell Computers for the purchase of Microsoft SQL Server and Windows Server licensing for the VMware virtual environment. Approve the creation of a purchase order for $62,910 payable to Avalon Technologies for the purchase of VMware licensing. And approve a purchase order for $20,000 payable to D2 Technologies for procuring and installing any required structured cabling, cabling management, or rack upgrades for the data centers in support of the new equipment, and to waive the request for proposal purchasing requirement for all purchases listed above.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Most township applications and data are stored and operated on physical equipment in the administrative building data center, which was installed in June 2018. The equipment has reached its end of life and will no longer be supported by Dell Computers after '24. Attempting to continue utilizing unsupported hardware increases the risks of data loss or severe disruption to employees and residents. The ITI department has worked with Dell Computers' technology partner to design an upgrade plan. This plan not only upgrades existing computer and storage systems at the admin building, but also provides additional equipment to be located at the township's disaster recovery data center, which is critical if the admin building data center is damaged or rendered unfunctional. Director Bagbu, do you want to add anything?
I just want to state that this is really crucial, given the day and age that we're in. Particularly, the element of business continuity for us is very crucial. I know we wrote it into the RBA, but it's not lost on me. The fact that the last tornado that came close to the building here gave us a real scare in terms of our preparedness to continue to provide services for both, you know, the township and the residents in general. So this whole package here prepares us to be resilient and efficient in what we're doing moving forward. And I'll take questions.
Actually, you're right. I should have read that part of the background. You're right. Not only the tornado, but in 2024, we've already had numerous hardware failures. And so that, that is an issue. I know you guys have been in there and sometimes rubber-banding things together. So this is important. Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Stephen?
Thank you. Victor, first of all, I noticed you're using like State of Michigan pricing, so no need for an RFP. I'm assuming it's good pricing from your estimation. In reading through this, I'm struggling to understand if anything is going to be taken off-site and into the cloud, or is this stuff that we need to have onsite? And now you're diversifying location and things like that.
So it's a combination of both. So the, there's a component of this which will require us to move a set of these equipments from outside of this building to another site. And for the sake of what it is, I'm not going to mention the other site. And so that whatever we're doing in this building, we're also doing at the other site. And then we have a robust connection between here and there. Should anything happen in this site, then the secondary site will take over, so that we'll continue to operate.
And, and these servers, this, this technology, it's required some, for some reason, that we still own and operate on our, in these sites, not in the cloud somewhere?
Yes. So strategically, we are estimating that we will still require on-prem solution for the next, let's say, for the next lifecycle of this equipment. And ITI has already begun migrating a few of the services to the cloud. Now, if you recall, we have the ERP solution coming, and I believe we had that RBA coming before the board, maybe in the next meeting or early July. And that ERP is going to be in the cloud. But we have several other key functions or key softwares that are still local, that we still have to manage. And this is part of what it's, you know, all about. Now, don't forget that at the moment, also, our telephone services and, you know, our surveillance, surveillance systems and all those things are still an on-prem solution. So these are the things that we are talking about here. And it also includes the backup of it, how you preserve them and make sure that they are, we use the word immutable, meaning that if ransomware comes in, we should be able to at least go to a safe one that is not yet affected by ransomware. So all these, these things are involved here. It's a major project for us, and I'm glad that we're even getting to this point to do this.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions or comments? Tanya?
Yeah, I just had a quick question and a comment. So, so you are going to, the other side will be the mirror of what we have here, right?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah. And that's, that's the standard in the corporate world. That's the standard business continuity plan that everybody has. And I, I work for a government agency in my day job. And there also we have, and of course, government agencies have stricter standards, you know, because there is more chance of ransomware attacks and other attacks happening. So, yeah, I think this is a sound investment, and we are, we are doing based on what we happened last August. We really need to have a backup process and a business continuity process for our IT systems.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item G12, consider approving a renegotiated billing service agreement with AccuMed.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a renegotiated billing service agreement between the Canton Fire Department and AccuMed Billing Incorporated.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Fire Department is requesting approval of a renegotiated billing services agreement with AccuMed Billing Incorporated. This would be a five-year agreement, which would lock in a 5.5% service fee of all invoices collected to AccuMed Billing Incorporated. AccuMed Billing would also pay an additional $4,430 toward the department's electronic patient care reporting annually. Director Stockline, do you want to add anything?
I'd be happy to answer any questions if you need it.
Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. G13, consider authorization of permit for 2024 Liberty Fest fireworks display.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize the Canton Township Clerk to sign the permit for Ace Pyro LLC authorizing their permission to possess, transport, and display fireworks at Canton's Liberty Fest on June 14, 2024.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. This is the event everybody's been waiting for. The fireworks display permit application and associated documentation from Ace Pyro LLC from Celine, Michigan, has been reviewed by the Fire Marshal, and was found to be in compliance with all National Fire Prevention Association requirements, as well as all state and federal fireworks laws. Therefore, the Fire Marshal is recommending authorization of the 2024 permit for Liberty, Liberty Fest fireworks. Director Stockline, you want to add anything?
It's going to be a great show and great weather, so make sure you show up.
Right. Any questions or comments?
This is really fair.
What's that?
Can we really vote no?
Yeah.
Can I move to table till next week?
Yeah, till next week. That's right.
No.
No, I don't think so.
Free, no festival.
It's Friday night, right?
Yes.
Friday night, yeah.
I bring easy decisions to you.
Sundown.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item G14, consider approval of the Canton Fire Department's five-year strategic plan.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the Canton Fire Department's five-year strategic plan, 2024 through 2028, as previously presented to the Canton Board of Trustees.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Canton Fire Department's requesting the township board approve its five-year strategic plan for '24 through '28. The plan is formally presented to the board at a study session on June 4, and final copies have been distributed to the trustees. Director Stockline, you gave this presentation on our last study session. Do you want to add anything?
No, we have our superstar here that created the document, so he's happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments? I think we got them last week. Okay.
I think one more copy to someone, right?
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. All right, now we move on to public comment. Let me see, I'm going to go online. Any public comment online? I don't see any online. Any public comment in the room? Please go to the podium for three minutes.
George Miller. I'm interested in Army Corps of Engineers taking a study on the art museum that the township bought for $2.8 million, and flooded. The creek is 25 foot from the front door. I hope you have flood insurance for it, or the engineers can do something to correct that. The roundabout is Sheldon and Ford Road. Mr. Poole, back in 1980, was trying to get it. There has been no improvements in the last 45 years on Ford Road, from Canton Center Road all the way to Telegraph, all through those communities. None. Also, I'd like to know, we spent $140,000 on a backhoe because it was 20 years old. The question is, how many hours is on it? During the winter, it sets. If the summer, a water mains break, maybe that only has 100 hours on it or so. It's not, it's a long ways from being wore out. Just because it's 20 years old doesn't mean it's worn out. Let's go on to the generators here. There's $300,000 in generators, and they haven't been used in 20 years. I talked to some employees here, and they haven't been used 100 hours. They should be good for 10,000 hours or 5,000 hours. I talked to truck drivers. On a truck engine on the road, they get a million miles. Also, I'm concerned about, I've complained about the guardrail at Palmer Road and Sheldon. It's leaning over in the ditch. It's ready to fall over in the ditch. Also, you have tree planting underneath the power lines, and they're supposed to be trimmed. You planted trees, and when the wind gets up, and like a tornado comes through or a high wind, it's like a sail. It grabs the cable wires on the bottom and cracks the high-power lines and tears them off. And there's no power. And I'd like to know when we can have possibly Sundays, no shooting at the gun range. That was settled many years ago when Mr. Joy was here, on Sunday and national holidays. Evidently, that wasn't honored here in the last month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments in the room?
Good evening, Dan Koznigan, 328 North Taggartie Road. First of all, I'd like to thank the Fire Chief and the Police Chief. As an excellent job, as always. Heart and soul of the community is the fire and police services. As we all know, community grows, becomes more and more tough for those gentlemen to effectively do their jobs. They've done a wonderful, outstanding job for this community. You could talk about million-dollar homes and $600,000 homes, but the heart of this community is, is the police and the fire, and they always must be supported. And they show that they, they truly care about the resident. They're always open and available. They are fantastic people. Moving on, I still don't agree with the parking lot. You can, $3.1 million, if we, if we invest at 5%, that's $156,000 a year. We could do a lot of work with $156,000 a year people. You're talking about $7 million in, in roads. How could we, how could we possibly spend $3 million in a parking lot back here? It's, there's wrong. How much is it per square foot? Something's wrong. Something's wrong. It's just, it's just a huge waste. There's something wrong. So that, that bid's got to be reviewed. Because what it looks like to people is there's no end to money. And let me tell you, there's an end to money. Money does run out. Right now, we're flush with cash, selling a lot of houses, building a lot of homes. People are moving here in droves. The economy's good. That don't mean it's always going to be that way. So we're spending money like there's no end. Last but not least, let's talk about the flooding. I sent pictures again today that the flooding is getting bad, and the levels of the creek are the highest I've ever seen them in 40 years. And I don't see anything happening addressing that. A month ago, I sent photos, and this is far downstream. This is on my land, on Lots Road. We're over the bank. Water's coming on the property. So we, we have no, we have, we are flooding right now, today. We're flooding. So we are one major storm event away from another catastrophic flood in Canton Township. And it's real simple. We're blocked somewhere between upstream and downstream. So somewhere to the Rouge, we're blocked, but nobody's addressing it. So it's mandatory. You can spend money on Army Corps, those are studies. We have a problem right now. Like the gentleman said, well, they got a bigger pond. But if that pond can't drain, you know, imagine your bathtub's full at home, and you push the lever, and it doesn't go down. There's no place for the water to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is board, oh, staff comments. Oh, oh, you still want to, oh, public comment? Okay. Did you hear about the Liberty Fest?
I've been recruited by Mr. Dave here.
Mr. Dave?
He would like to thank the township for taking care of the sidewalks and paths ahead for the Liberty Festival. So obviously, it's very, very important to Dave and Maureen to have access to the park. So we're appreciative of that.
It will be Monday, Saturday morning.
And he will be running on Saturday morning, so.
Oh, very nice. With Maureen?
Oh, just you. Just solo.
It might be basketball, and a moose.
Yeah, because it's on the trails. He runs solo. It'd be a bumpy ride for her, so. Good luck.
We're going to look for you. You're going to win. It's going to be fun. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Staff comment?
If you would, I'd like to introduce our assessor from CLIA. This week, we're under his leadership. He's reviewing all our policies and procedures and protocols and makes sure they're in place with our police department. His name is Captain Mark, retired Captain Mark Schwobel from Hurst, Texas. After 37 years, he retired, and in his retirement, he does assessments for CLIA. So welcome, Mark, and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Was this just to get out of the heat of Texas?
Anyone else before we talk about the Liberty Fest? No? No, nothing? Okay. John, you want to tell us what's on, what's happening this week?
Yeah, all kinds of good stuff, right? Everything from recruiting any of you folks to participate in our eating contest put on by our festival sponsor, Nehes and Pizza Balla. Come on out and participate in that. Should be a lot of fun. All the way up to our Juneteenth celebration on Saturday evening. We hope all of you will be there for that. So lots of great things planned. As you can see, the park is coming alive. It's always a fun week to watch. A city be built in a matter of a couple days, so that's happening now. And I've got a great lineup. Forecast looks great. It's definitely going to warm up here in the next few days, so we will be ready for that as well. But just an army of people preparing for the festival, can't, can't say enough about the support we get from police and fire, every department. I said it today, this is like the shining example of how well all of our departments work together here, and it, it reminds me every year after, even after all this time. So it should be a great weekend. I look forward to seeing everybody out there. This is Canton's signature event, and we hope to make everybody very proud.
Thank you. It's going to be a lot of fun. Anyone else? Victor? No? Deputy? No? Directors? No? Okay. Started up here. Stephen?
Well, by the time this airs, it'll be over, but the Police Department golf outing is tomorrow and in conjunction with the Canton Foundation. And I hear there's a power foursome of the supervisor, the police chief, and the fire chief, and who else? The deputy supervisor? Oh, my God.
The ringers.
We'll just, we'll just give you guys the trophy right now.
Okay.
Looking forward to that. And it, it benefits the Canton Foundation, Community Foundation, and the Police Benevolence Fund, which does a lot of good in our community.
Luckily, it's a scramble.
It is. But you have to have one player that can scramble.
That's true. That's true. Stephen usually wins last place, so.
Not anymore.
That's true. We did, we did lose last place a couple years ago, didn't we?
No, our fine officers and from other department, other communities as well, show up for it. So, and they all, there's a lot of good golfers there.
Yeah, there are. So, there are. Thank you. And Stephen, it's the last time you got to vote on the Liberty Fest.
Well, but not the last time I get to attend, so.
That's right.
Keep it going.
That's right. Treasurer Slavens?
Yeah, looking forward to the Liberty Fest. It's been fun watching the tents go up and everything, and hopefully, all of our dads will have a nice Father's Day on Sunday, so wishing everybody well.
This is Sunday. Tanya?
Yeah, it's a Sunday, wishing all the dads Happy Father's Day. There's also an Eid celebration on Sunday. The community is celebrating at Independence Park, and of course, the Liberty Fest. And some of us board members will be participating in that Eid competition. So we'll see how that goes.
I'll judge.
Michael?
Yeah, Eid Mubarak to the Muslim community coming up. Excited for, for Liberty Fest. Clerk's Office will be out there signing folks up for the permanent ballot or automatic ballot list, which is now an option for voters if they, if they so, if they want to, and just handing out information about early voting and the elections that we have this year. Additionally, we are getting, so we're getting excited for that. And I'm, the Canton Nature Society had a meeting last night at the summit that went well and is progressing forward well, and we're super excited to engage with the township on partnerships and maybe do some native plantings and things like that. And if you haven't had an opportunity to either go out and walk between the library and Heritage Park, go out to the Village Arts Factory, as referenced by, in public comment, or at Zibewest, the nature area at Ford and Ridge across from the PDD that we talked about a lot tonight. There are wildflower plantings out there, acres of wildflower plantings. It's really cool, and you'll see lots of folks going out there to get their, their photos taken. Right now, it's fun in year one. It's got a lot of, a lot of poppies out there, and it just looks really cool, a lot of color. So check those out if you haven't had an opportunity to do that. Dave Hammond does those plantings with his nonprofit. He's also a board member of the Canton Nature Society. So they do some really good work out there. And then I wanted to call out or applaud my, my staff, because the Clerk's Office won an award from the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks, our statewide association, for excellence in security and cybersecurity. And it was a program, the Voter Communication Repository, that was created by Kristen Weisep in my office, who is now a continuing part-time employee. So you don't have to be a chief or a deputy chief to win an award. Sometimes, you know, even a part-time employee can do that. So it was a brilliant idea. I've already heard feedback from other communities that they're going to implement it as a best practice. And I'm very proud of her and the overall staff. She, when she finds out I mentioned her by name, will be really embarrassed and very angry at me because she abhors, you know, recognition. So Kristen Weisep, thank you very much. I really do appreciate the work you do for my office. And, and yeah, really proud about this award. Out of 1,600 jurisdictions in Michigan, we were one of seven to win an award, so it feels pretty good.
Yay. Congratulations.
Congratulations. So in closing, so I just want to kind of talk about a sad note, then we'll get happy note again. But so four day, five days ago, last Wednesday, actually, almost six days ago, so there's a tornado in Livonia. And I found out today, actually, from our emergency manager, that it actually passed over Canton at Lilian Ford before it settled down in Livonia. But I was sitting in a restaurant in Canton, and Debbie Dingell, Congresswoman, called me, and she said, is Canton okay? And I said, yes, why? I said, the storms ended here, we don't have any power outage, so what's going on? She goes, I think there's some fatalities in Livonia. She brought my heart up to my throat because my son and his family live there. And then I called our emergency manager, and they said that it was at Five Mile, and Five Mile and Newburgh, and that a family was trapped. And what happened, I, Maureen Brosnan, I was in a meeting with her this morning, and she talked about these resources that just went and helped. She's, Canton was one of them. She thanked us, you know, our fire and our police that helped cut the family out. They actually, she actually bragged about the technology that was used to find where the family was. It took, I think they said, and Chris, you could talk about this, that it was like 12 firemen just cutting up that tree to get in there, and then we went and helped, and we helped clean out the debris, but just to find, you know, unfortunately, the little boy perished and the mother didn't. But I mean, again, a testament to, you know, how we went in and helped. But she was very touched by, by what we did, and she did mention that. But it was, I mean, it was all hands on deck as usual, and just like it was all hands on deck when we had our tornado too. So I'm really proud of everybody for the services that we provided and that were provided to us. But it was just, it was a sad day, and I think, and the funeral's Friday, but I think that we did everything we could, and if you look at the pictures, it's just devastating. But thank you for what you did. But Happy Father's Day again to everybody. And I don't know if anybody wants to say anything else about anything that we did over the week to help them, or want to brag about yourself, or talk about what we did, services we provided?
No, I, I think that, you know, it's touching for the, you know, it's hard for the, the members of the Fire Department and not just, you know, Livonia. Like, we see that stuff all the time, police, fire. So, you know, it's, it's one of our approaches, and that's, you know, where Jamie, you know, got his award, right? Because that's the things that we're addressing, right? It's mental health, you know, to make sure that our responders are able to handle those situations. So it's a travesty, and it's, you know, it's a horrible thing, and that's what we're here for. That's what we do, and we'll continue to do that for the, for the community and to support the other communities. But in the meantime, we'll take care of ourselves, and we appreciate the support in that. And it's just that police and fire as well, you know? I, I saw plenty of DPW trucks and all kinds of stuff going up there as well, so.
Our CERT workers went too, the next day to help clean up.
CERT workers were up there, emergency managers up there, so it's, it's like they said, all hands on deck, so.
Thank you to our emergency team. All right, great. So now it's time to adjourn, and then we will see everybody on the weekend. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
移到
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting's ended. Thank you.